All right, we're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. We are live this week for the first time after convention. And we have today with us our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everybody. We're glad you're here and we're excited to be back live.
Yes, absolutely. I'm Coach Ashley. For those of you who don't know me, we hold these trainings every single week to help you, you young living distributor, grow your business. You want to get good at sharing, you want to get good at the things worth getting good at to turn this sharing opportunity into the business that will take you to where you want to go. You're in the right place. This is totally free for every young living distributor. We do this every week. Live as often as possible, last two weeks being the exception, including a convention. And this is an opportunity for you to come and not only get immersed in the types of skill building and understanding that you need to increase to be able to grow your business, but also to be able to get hands-on help, whether that's with your marketing or with your tech, whether you're currently a member of our beloved Get Oiling community or not yet. So long as you are a young living distributor, this is here to serve you. So I've got some slides I'm going to go over here shortly. Going to do a training today. We are talking about how to increase your monthly orders. But after that bit of training, we're going to go into the live Q and A. So for those of you who watch this as a recording later on, know that if you, you know, if you stick around here in the beginning, you're going to get the training which you came for. And then, of course, if there's any other tech stuff that you want to see recovered, then of course you can continue on from that point. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and share my slides and get rocking and rolling. Although I will request before we get started, those of you who are joining in live, if you have any questions, if you have any tech, anything that you would really love our help with, we are going to have a period of time after this brief training where we can get hands on with you. So definitely go ahead and head over to the Q and A section and add your questions there or, you know, raise your hand, write a comment. Let us know that you would like our help and with what. And we can see about getting, getting our sleeves rolled up and working with you after our training. All right. There we go. Can you see my screen?
Looks great.
All right, fantastic. So like I mentioned, this Get Growing Weekly Work Session is all about how to grow your monthly orders. So welcome to everyone who is a member of our community or those who are just finding us out there on the web. Maybe somebody that you know in Young Living has referred you to us. No matter who you are, we're certainly glad to have you here today. We are here on a mission to help you grow. So part one of today is going to be training followed by a live Q and A and live help session. So let's get rocking and rolling. If you want to learn how to grow your monthly orders without feeling pushy or salesy while doing so, you're in luck, you're in the right place because today you're going to learn the one mindset shift and the three core areas of focus that you need to turn your monthly increase into your MO, right? You want to make monthly increase the thing that happens for you month over month over month. These are the things you're going to want to know. All right, so let's talk about increasing those monthly orders. We're going to break this down into three sections. First, what you need to do before someone even gets started with you to guarantee that you have an increase in monthly orders. This starts before somebody even gets their first kit. Then what you do at signup, that will ensure an increase in your monthly orders. And then on an ongoing basis, this is the one that most of us focus on. We've got people to the point now where like, well, why aren't they ordering, right? That's probably where most of us are, which will, what you'll come to understand by the close of this training is that there's a lot of mindset and strategy that goes into this before you even sit down with someone that will help you here, like right now and into the future, help you to get that increase going on an ongoing basis. Now here's the mindset shift. The fact is you, young living distributor, are not selling product. What you are doing at the end of the day is selling a lifestyle. You are embodying and sharing a lifestyle. And if you can keep that focus, you will sell lots of product. And we'll get into those details here shortly. If you're embodying that lifestyle, you will be attracting people to you who are not only curious about product, but who are committed to the outcomes that the lifestyle brings, all right? This is the most important thing that you need to know. You are not selling product. You are selling a lifestyle. And if you are embodying and sharing that lifestyle, then you are leading people naturally toward purchasing product. Make sense? All right, so let's talk about what you do before signing someone up to increase your monthly orders. First, you need to know how to put your lifestyle brand out there, right? So this is going back to that, that first thing that I just shared with you, that mindset, the mindset shift. Your lifestyle brand, how you present yourself, whether it's in person in your community or online on social media, being the person who is embodying the lifestyle that Young Living has made possible for you. It's important that this is what you're putting out there, not promotional materials, but materials that, that inspire and entice, things that make people say, oh, wow, wouldn't life be great if I was seeing that benefit as well? Now, to that end also, you need to have outcome-based language, right? So this is in your communication with someone, like before they sign up. This could be in your presentation. It could also again be on social media. Your outcome-based language is not around, this is my product, you know? So this is Ning Shu Red and it has Wolfberry and these oils, right? It's, this is what it does for me, right? Now that this is a part of my life, this is what it does. So if you're using outcome-based language, people aren't really concerned about what the ingredients are. So long as it solves a problem that they have, they're in, right? So make sure that you're making that shift in the way that you communicate directly and en masse using social media by focusing on outcome-based language as opposed to, as opposed to delving into details. One of the things that I think is really important for, for you all to remember is that now that you're in, right, you're, you're, you're a part of Young Living, you are immersed in this lifestyle. You love the minutia, right? You love understanding why the oils work the way that they do. You love understanding the differences between different types of products in the marketplace and why what you have is better. You have to recognize that where the person that you want to be committed, you want to be purchasing and on essential rewards and getting the benefit of these product lines, you need to understand that they're not thinking the way that you are, right? And the way that you're going to reach them in such a way that makes them open to a lifestyle change, which again, remember is what you're selling is lifestyle change. You need to speak to them where they can hear you, right? And what they're not going to hear is detail, 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 right? What they're going to hear and want to hear is, I had this problem, now I don't. I found a thing that helped me solve it easily. Would you like to know what it is? That's that gap that you're filling. So when you're using that outcome-based language, you're going to get a lot more people interested in the first place. And then, of course, once they say yes, they're going to stay more committed. All right, you also need to have a holistic focus in how you are communicating with people. And what I mean by this is that this isn't just about promoting the sale of product, right? This is about a whole. This is about outcomes. This is about a process. Because when you consider the whole, when you have an opportunity to share with someone, obviously what you want to be able to do, a couple of key things you want to be able to do is to get this person to say yes to a kit and to say yes to essential rewards, but it doesn't stop there, right? You need to be invested in their, in the outcomes, their why, the reason why they, they would say yes in the first place. And then, of course, having them get the result that they want, that outcome that they want, that would make them thrilled to go and start sharing, right? So consider that whole focus. You're not just, you know, if you're, if you're looking at just getting a premium starter kit and that is the thing that you're focused on, you're missing all of the really good stuff on the other side. All right. And then, of course, remembering before you even sign someone up, you need to present to them, not products, not details, you need to present to them a new way of living, not just those products and product lines. They need to see that there, that it's possible for them to have the life that they want. And the products are the path there, right? You're selling the lifestyle, not the product. All right, now let's talk about how you can put this into action. Again, talking about before someone even signs up. First, if there was ever a thing that social media is actually really, really good for and maybe meant for in the scope of your business, it is this part. It is the channeling of the lifestyle messaging and the outcome-based language into the image that you cultivate for yourself online. Now, I am not here to tell you that you need to go be an overly filtered Instagram influencer, like that's, that's, it's not what I mean at all. What I mean by this is that you need to be your authentic self, putting your personality, your own personal brand out to the world in such a way that is inspiring, right? So this would mean, think about, think about all the vacation posts that people put up in the summertime. These are aspirational inspirational images. You think about basically everything that's not just a picture of the product, right? Like a picture of the bottle of oil, while it means a lot to you, does not really mean a lot to somebody else. They want to see or be inspired towards something that's going to lead to the resolution of a problem that they have. Okay, so social media is a good place to get started with this. And, and just a couple of key pointers, I know we could go into an entire training about social media. I would live your best life, share it in images, whatever social media platform that you prefer and choose, and focus on starting conversations around those outcome-based language points. You could also do this with blogging and video. Use your Get Oiling blog for this. And, and what you would do in this instance is you would write a post about the, you know, the three summer must haves to, you know, beat the heat and the bugs or whatever, you know, whatever it might be. You would share again, outcomes, right? So beating the heat, this isn't about like, you know, our sunscreen has this and not that in it. Most people aren't looking at sunscreen that way. Most people are like, wait, I can, I can, I want to learn how to beat the heat and get rid of bugs with three simple steps, like sure. That's what you need to be thinking about. So you could do this via blogging or in video. And this is the stuff that people take in, they see from you and that preps them and primes them for commitment, right? So not just buying the kit, but staying committed. And then, of course, in your presentations, the presentations that you give, no matter what presentation you use to share Young Living, if you, you know, do a 101 soup to nuts, you know, there's a lot of those out there. Or if you like altering your class styles for the seasons and so on, however you like to present, remember that this isn't about the product. This is about the lifestyle. If you want to increase your monthly orders forever and ever and ever, and you want it to be something that duplicates in your business, you and then, of course, those who would be following in your footsteps and sharing, you and your team need to focus on lifestyle, okay? This is that, that's the most important thing. If you want continuity, you want to increase in your residual income, you want people to order every month without you having to, you know, to, to, to chase them down to do it, you have got to start at the beginning before anything even happens, before anything is signed on the dotted line by focusing on lifestyle, outcome-based languages. So again, talking about not, this is, you know, what this component of the oil does, but this is what it does for you, okay? And work that into your presentations as well. All right, so now let's talk about what you do at signup. All right, so you have, you have put yourself out to the world as, as someone who is embodying this lifestyle that was made possible to you thanks to some product lines that we'll talk about together later, right? But if you're interested in making these changes in your life and losing that weight and, you know, freeing yourself from the symptoms of this, that, and the other thing, I have a way for you. Let's go check it out, right? So you're putting that out there on social media. People are coming to your presentations. Now they understand there is a lifestyle shift that can be facilitated and you can lead the way. Now let's talk about what happens when we sign people up. First things first, set a goal together. Remember your goal, that holistic focus, your goal is not just to get a kit sale. Your goal is not just to get a kit sale and, and go ahead and get started on essential rewards. These are both very important, well, essential things for you to do, right? But there's a why here that you need to tap into. The reason why the person who just said, yes, I'm ready to get started, there's a reason why they are ready to get started on not purchasing a kit, but on a lifestyle change, making those first few steps toward some significant shifts in their life. So you want to find out what that why is and set a goal together. And it's really important that you don't make the, say, go set a goal privately and then maybe talk to me about it later. You want to be accountable to one another with this goal. That is really important if you want to retain the business that you build and even more importantly, get people the results that they want, right? Then you need to set expectations and lead the way. You have already begun setting the expectations in the way that you have been sharing lifestyle on social media and elsewhere. Now you need to set specific expectations. So if their goal is to detox their life, right? They're going to start with their body and then they, and then the next step is, is they, they, they clear, they fix their, their makeup bag, right? And then the next step is we work on the kitchen and then the next step is we work on the laundry room, right? So set expectations and say, this is going to go in stages. You don't have to do all of this all at once. Yes, that could be overwhelming if you did, so let's start here. And then next month, we're going to do this. And then next month, we're going to do that. You can't let someone else dictate how this path lays out. Someone who's brand new to Young Living and does not really know that much. They're going to be underwater in a sea of product information and product lines if you do this and they'll get overwhelmed and they will run away, right? Or, or they'll freeze and never make a decision. You lead the way until they're ready to lead themselves. And this is true of customers as much as it is for those who want to share and build a business. You lead the way until they're ready to lead themselves. Okay, so set the expectations at the outset. Let them know, listen. Making a lifestyle shift and achieving the goal that we've just set together, it's, it's not always easy. You could even share here, you know, when I first got started, these were my worries and concerns. But here's what fixed them, right? It's just doing one thing at a time. So here's our plan. This month, we're going to do this. Next month, we're going to do that. Let's go ahead and get you set up on essential awards and we'll get those orders queued up. Sound good? Let's go, right? So set those expectations and you lead the way. Don't let somebody else do it because you will lose them if you do. Or you will find yourself having to chase them forever to try to get them truly integrated with the product. And again, remember, this isn't just about selling product. This is about you literally leading the way and helping and guiding someone toward the outcome of goal that you have just set together. All right, now in order to reach that goal, commit now to what it takes, sign up for essential rewards and pick the products now for upcoming months. This is what you're going to want to more or less say in a nutshell when you get someone started. So here's our goal. All right, cool. Here's our goal. Here's what you need to know in order to achieve it. And so in order to reach that, one of the things that you've got to do right now is to go ahead and get on to essential awards. It's going to keep you accountable. Life gets in the way, but we'll already have the plan in place, so it's easy for you to stick with no matter what. Are you ready? Of course, let's go. All right. Super important. Okay, now here's how we put it into action. First, you can use ordering guides and product guides. I know that we work at Aroma Sharing at a number of different events, obviously not just at convention. And we've seen a couple of really great business tools that are sold to young living distributors. If you're here right now and you use ordering or product guides, leave a comment. Whether in the recording later on on YouTube, leave a comment below the video, but right now in the chat, let us know. If there's a resource that you really love to use along the lines of product guides when you're getting someone started that would help them to, you know, sort of better thematically pick the things that they want to do in succession, achieve the goals that they're looking for. This is a really great tool to use. All right, and then have them write their goal down and then set check-ins with you. See, sharing a goal verbally is, is as easy as just the talking that I'm doing right now. If nothing is done with it, it means nothing. It starts to mean a lot more when you write the goal down. So have them write their goal down, have them share it with you, right? So that you can help them be accountable to it. And then every month, you're going to set a check-in. Now, think about this. If you're here right now, maybe a quick show of hands, who knows what a care call is and does care calls for their customers? All right, all right, so in case you, I don't know if some of you guys are asleep over here. I know you guys know what care calls are, but for those of you who, who maybe don't know, a care call is basically just a check-in to make sure that, you know, that they've got their order ready or that they've got enough in their ER, you know, in their ER order, you know, to be able to get the, the rewards and the points and everything. Just checking in to make sure that they're good. They don't need any explanation or help with something or, you know, you get what I mean. So you're checking in, it's customer service, if you will. All right, so this is something that you are all doing or should be doing. But that mindset shift at the beginning, remember where we're, we're not in this to sell product. We're, we're in this to facilitate lifestyle change. Start making those check-ins or when you're getting someone started in this case, set those check-ins not to be care calls where you're trying to make sure that they order as much as, as possible or that you're helping them actually literally order as much as they need. Have your care calls, have your check-ins be around the resolution to achieve that goal, right? Have those calls be based around the goal, be goal-oriented in all of your communication, not sales-oriented, right? And this is something that's really unique to Young Living in terms of a network marketing company. When I was growing up, my mom was in Mary Kay and she had a Mary Kay lady she called, you know, once a, you know, once a month to make sure that, you know, mom was getting her order in. And it's very transactional, right? Young Living is a lifestyle company. So you can actually have someone who has any number of different kinds of goals and you are there to help them achieve them. And you don't have to have specialized knowledge. All you have to do is be able to point to product lines or specific things, which you can easily research. Don't leave it up to your, your, your customers to do all the researching themselves. If they're goal-oriented and they've shared their goal with you, you know where to look. You know where to even get help yourself to help guide that, right? So make those calls, those check-in calls, goal-specific. And then put the check-ins on the calendar. I don't know if you guys have seen my trainings before, but if you have, I talk about this a lot. Every call that you have set with someone, whether it's for them to review a presentation, come to a class that you're giving, have a follow-up call with you after reviewing information or once they are, of course, a member of yours, have every call, every, every interaction with the person or persons that you will be interacting with on a calendar. Use the digital one and send an invite or write it down and confirm it and ask them to do the same. There's this really important phenomenon that we need to recognize here is that if we're, if we're struggling with keeping our monthly orders up and with people picking up the phone when we call or responding or what have you, we need to help others facilitate, we need to facilitate others' perception of what we're doing as a business. Because if we aren't treating our business like a business, people are going to look at it like a hobby, right? People are going to treat what you're doing, what you're sharing of Young Living like a hobby and they're going to think, oh, it's not so consequential if I don't make it to that class. Oh, it's not so consequential if I don't, you know, get on the phone and, you know, or buy that next, you know, that next oil or product or whatever. If you approach this, what you do, the sharing that you do with a seriousness and accountability that you expect of others to reciprocate, then you're going to see a transformative shift in your results. You're going to see a massive increase in your results. So put everything that you do and plan to do on the calendar. All right, you also want to make sure that you start operating like a coach. This is a really important thing for you to take into your mindset as well. Start operating like a coach because even if you are just getting started with Young Living, if you said yes, then you see the big picture and you understand that there's a lot that you can help a lot of people with. So many different, you know, ailments, goals, what have you, that you can facilitate healing and transformation and shifts in for others. You need to start behaving like a coach, holding others accountable, being accountable yourself and understanding that this is not a transactional relationship that you're, that you're embarking upon with others. This is a transformative one, right? You're looking to help people change their lives as a result of introducing them to these products. All right, so let's talk about how we do this on an ongoing basis, how to increase your orders on an ongoing basis. We have covered before they get started, when they get started, and now let's talk about retention and moving forward. Now you want to keep a presence, remembering to, to keep that, the, the idea of lifestyle marketing or, or just generally sharing lifestyle as opposed to product, like on social media and elsewhere. Keep the presence, that presence of yours in the lives of those who are your members, right? So walk the walk, share yourself walking the walk on social media. You're getting results with the products. Talk about the results that you're getting. Inspire people toward moving their feet, toward empowering themselves, bettering themselves, educating themselves, okay? If you operate not like, you know, the person who has a case full of things and what do you want to buy this month? And you start behaving like someone who has achieved a great thing. And if you're here today, you have, you have achieved a great thing because you have realized that you need to make a commitment to change in order to see results. And you have taken those first steps that puts you miles ahead of most people who are struggling with any type of problem. Can we agree on that? Maybe a quick show of hands. Amen on that. So keep a presence and be a leader, be a beacon in this way and share those lifestyle elements, not just with the people who could eventually become your customers, your members, but to those members who are already with you because you're the inspiration that will keep them going and remind them that, not that they need to more order oils this month, right? But that they need to continue on their path that they shared with you, that they're committed to following. All right, embody that lifestyle, lead the way, lead by example, all right? Always be elevating how you present yourself and always be endeavoring to do a better job of leading toward the type of goals, the type of lifestyle that others would want to follow. And then, of course, you want to keep that accountability with your check-ins, being present with your members to make sure that, no, not just that they are ordering enough oils this month, but that they are on track with their goals, right? If they have a weight specific goal, let's do weigh-in, check-in. Let's do whatever it is that, that you're passionate about and whatever degree to which you want to facilitate and help others. This doesn't have to require a ton of extra time. It just takes a little bit more specific attention on your part to, to pay attention, to listen and to be present so that you can help someone else get a fantastic result. Because once they get that fantastic result, aren't they going to be more likely to share? And enthusiastically so, right? And to lead themselves. And finally, of course, mentioned this a few times, make sure that your, your communication with your existing members, those who have gotten started with you already, make sure that it's goal-oriented, not sales-oriented, okay? The sales will follow if you are focused on helping people create the outcomes. The monthly volume will follow and increasingly so if you focus on helping people attain outcomes by once you, again, once they have said, okay, well, this is the outcome that I want, then you point them to the product. They may have no interest in whatever the PV promotion is. They just really need that thing that's going to help them with this digestive issue. And man, if you could help them solve that one thing, don't you think they would be open to everything else that this company has to offer? It just takes a little bit more specific attention. Just a couple of questions and then you following through, keeping those notes. And if you're using Get Oiling, you've got your, your contact manager or you can log those things in. You could even remind yourself to, to follow up with these people. One of my favorite features inside of Get Oiling, we got a lot of high-tech, cool stuff, but Greg created this follow-up plan feature, which is just deceptively simple, like in terms of what it looks like. But what it can do for you is to assist you in following systems in your business that will help you to free up your brain space to be able to go out there and get more good stuff done. All right, so before I go too far off into that rabbit hole, we got other, we got other trainings on that if you want to look that up as well. All right, now on an ongoing basis, again, using your Get Oiling blog and social media, just like you would with folks who haven't gotten started with you yet, lead the way with lifestyle. Lead the way by sharing outcomes, by sharing inspiration and by helping others to see that there is something better for themselves and they deserve it. And if you've got folks who are sharing, right? So maybe you've got some people who have gotten some great results. Connect your digital upline coaches in Get Oiling so that they can see and be inspired by the action you're taking in your business so that they would follow along and do the same. If you can inspire more people to get more active in sharing, how much more would your business grow, right? And then use that follow-up plan that I just mentioned with every single member. Apply that follow-up plan. We've got them already made. We've got them already made for you. Add them to the contact manager. It's just a click and you can add a follow-up plan with monthly care calls. And all you got to do is add notes, what's their goal? And then you talk about that goal every time you check in with that follow-up call, right? Make sure you don't drop the ball and use those follow-up plans. All right, so always also make sure that you're looking for ways to increase your sharing. So make it easier for people who are members to share. And no, this doesn't mean that you need to try to talk your members into building a business, right? What you want to do is provide incentives where possible for product or for any kind of value-add that you can provide or that you can point to or share or just come up with ideas to make it fun. I mean, this could be a, you know, a girls' night in spa party just where some, you know, some friends of somebody who is your member can come over and experience the product. Not in, I'm going to give you the whole 101 thing. You know, it doesn't even have to be like that. Make sharing easy for folks who are getting started. Make, you don't want to inundate them with information. And this is another reason why you really want to start with those goals and get very specific and pointed first. Because once they get what they came for in terms of that one result, then the door opens wide in terms of, you know, whether or not this person will want to deepen their relationship with these product lines and the opportunity here. And on your check-in calls, you want to always offer to host an event for their friends. If this is someone who's not sharing yet, you want to do this. If this is someone who is sharing, do this. Offer to host an event for their friends. It could be online if you're long distance. Of course, you could do this beautifully in person so they don't have to worry about, oh, well, how do I talk about it? What do I do? No, you get somebody started, say, hey, how about we have a party for you? You know, you can, you can experience more of the product that maybe you don't have access to because then they order more, right? If they love what, what they get. And then, of course, their friends come over and they are shown and shared in a way that feels very comfortable. And then, you know, you, you talk about the rest of the details separately, right? When you sit down and you talk about goals. All right, and then, of course, stay connected on the basis of goals, not orders. If you focus on the goals and you facilitate outcomes, you help people get what they came for, the orders will follow and follow and grow and grow exponentially. And then, of course, you want to give recognition where it's earned, where someone has taken a step toward their goal. Give them a shout-out on social, on social media. Maybe ask them first if they're cool with it. You know, some people like to keep some of these goals private for themselves, but give recognition, congratulate people. Make sure that, that they understand, again, that this isn't you here transactionally trying to sell them Young Living's products. This is you here invested in them achieving their goals and them experiencing what you know is possible if they can follow along and do what you can guide them toward with these products, all right? So I want to ask you guys, if you're here today, what is your favorite way to increase your monthly orders? You want to leave us a comment here in the chat live? Well, leave us a comment below the video on the recording on YouTube. Share with us your favorite way to increase your monthly orders and leave us a comment there. And if you want to join us for future live sessions, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We do this every week. All right, so now we're going to get into the Q and A. Do we have anyone here who would like us to roll up our sleeves and get to work with you? Super exciting. Awesome.
We do have one person who has a question for us so far. If anyone else does, certainly, you know, feel free to drop something in the chat. We'll get to you. Or the Q and A button as well is a nice place to post a question. So Becky asks, one of my teammates and I are using the same programs, Grow Workspace and GetOiling. Thank you. What is the easiest way for me to email and text everyone in my group except for those in her group? So I'm assuming this is like an upline downline situation. It doesn't, I don't know. If, if not, then this answer might not be 100% accurate. But what I would recommend is you can, okay, thanks. Yes, you're upline. Yeah, yeah, Becky just said she's upline. So, so you'll be able to access her team inside of the Young Living virtual office. So my recommendation would be this, like whenever you're importing contacts, and this is assuming you want to message everybody but her. So, or her and her leg, I should say. So one of the, one of the things you can do is make us, I think you can, I think inside of Young Living, you can, you can like filter down based on people there. And if you export from, you know, at that point and then export just those people in her leg and then bring them into GetOiling and tag them, there's a way that you can filter, which I could probably show you. I should share my screen out here. But you can filter basically based on people that do not have specific tags. So I will share out my screen here.
Oh yeah, definitely do. And there's a way to do this as well with the tree viewer, right? Where you can actually just kind of select legs of your business?
Yep, so there's, yeah, a couple of different ways of doing that for sure. If you have, it depends on kind of the number of top-level people in your team here. And I think this demo account has some people. Okay, perfect. So, so this is the other way of doing it. This, well, here, I'll finish that other way. So like when you're filtering here on the back on there, you can say, I want to match people that do not have a specific tag. And if you would tag her leg as whatever, downline or whatever, whatever her name is, then that would exclude them and then you could mail them that way. The other way is, it's coming over here into the tree viewer, which is this little button here under the manage link in the contacts menu. And then you can choose which people you want to email. So this is the only one in this little demo account that has anybody down below her. But let's say you wanted to just mail these people. I'm not very good at clicking, but let's say we want to email everyone except this last person here. You can do that. Great, you got your 15 selected. Let's say we're going to mail those 15. And then you want to check the box. This is also mail the downline of each selected contact and then that will mail it that way. So the two approaches I gave, it really depends on how big your team is. If your team is small enough for clicking these, it's not a big deal. Great. If you've got like 300 people at your top level, then you might want to try the other way I was talking about. But for smaller teams, this certainly works really well to go to the tree viewer, select those that are, you do want to mail and then go through that process where you say, you know, select them, mail the selected contacts and then check that also mail downline box and that will just go to them and not to everyone else. So hopefully that helps. Oh, go through the larger team again, please. Okay, cool. I will definitely do that. So I think, I think in, I'm not going to open up the virtual office here, but I, I know there's a way in the virtual office of Young Living to export just a group of people. So like you can filter within there. And so then what you do, you would filter down to your downline. And then when you do an import under settings in import, there's a way that you can come in here and on the next screen, let's see if I can find a file that has, whoops. Let's see, but see if something like this works. So I'm just going to grab some random file. On the next screen here, you'll see kind of down below there's add tags to imported contacts. And so you could tag her as something, you know, maybe whatever her name is, your team or her team, whatever. Then when you're going back into the contact manager, once those are imported, they'll all have that tag, of course. And then it can come under filter and say none untagged. So match contacts without these tags and then choose that tag for her team and then filter. And then you can send out mail then that way. So hopefully that makes sense. If not, let me know, but those are kind of the different ways. It's just, yeah, again, it depends on how many people you have at the top line. If I've already imported them without a tag, it will automatically update if I do again, right? Yes, yep, it matches them up since, you know, all the imports from the virtual office, from the Young Living virtual office come in with a member number and so those will just update in place or add to them. So if her team grows, you'd have to periodically update it so that, you know, re-import her, her leg and have that tag there. So awesome, cool.
Yeah, yeah, great question. And, and just for, for maintenance on an ongoing basis, especially if your team is growing. And, and I hope this is certainly the case for you. We definitely have members, GetOiling members, who will do an import from the VO several times a week, right? Just, just to make sure, just depending on how actively you're sending out all of those broadcasts. But another thing that you can do strategically is, you know, is maybe even look at, since you're both using these tools. And, and this is, this is just generally just good, good business practice in this industry, is to even look at, you know, opportunities where you could kind of share in promoting together, share resources together, like say using a member area that, you know, that has sort of everyone in it. And then you can just, you know, as, as the upline of everybody, just send out one thing, but it doesn't, you know, step on your leader's toes. You know what I mean? Like there's, there are a number of ways that you guys can kind of co-market in that way should you decide to. Awesome. Annalisa has a question in the Q and A. If you want to build on Facebook, what's your best thought to reach new people? Oh, could do a whole training on this and in fact, I have many, many of them. So Annalisa, what I would recommend is first, to make sure that you're positioning yourself. Make sure that you are focusing on lifestyle, right? And, and you're, you're putting your best life out there and ideally being an inspiration for, for others, right? So you, you are, you are goal-oriented and focused. You are working towards specific outcomes in your life and you are embodying them, sharing them online. And then what you do, when you are, you know, really presenting yourself in the way that, that you want to be, is you go and you, you find the people that, that you want to connect with. The easiest place to go, really, that, that's most, most comfortable and also most effective, is just ask yourself, what am I passionate about? What do I, what do I really like doing? So whether it's cooking or knitting or greening or, you know, or, or raising toddlers or farming or whatever, there's a group on Facebook of people who are connected over that purpose. So go into that group and being your best self, leader self, go there and, and contribute. Seek to become a leader, a pillar in that community just like you would in your local community if you wanted to do this offline. You know, be someone that others will look to and be a friend. Go in and make new friendships. We don't go into these groups in this, this practice that I'm sharing here. We don't go into these groups and start promoting in them, right? Or, you know, posting our PV promos and stuff like that. But we go and we ask questions. We start conversations that then can go off into the, the private chat. You know, make real friends. And then when those opportunities arise for you to share or invite, then you do that. You could also get in touch with group owners. So let's just say for instance, that you are super into some things that are perfectly peripheral to Young Living, you know, such as, you know, organic gardening or, you know, healthy cooking, you know, raising healthy kids, stuff like that, that just is perfectly peripheral to Young Living. Like there's a product for that, if you think there's a product for that. And then that's, that's what I'm talking about. And you go to, to the owner of that group on Facebook and you say, hey, I am, you know, I'm, I'm passionate about XYZ and I actually give classes on this topic. You know, if it's something that you're open to, I would love to give a class to your group if, if, if you'd allow it. How can we work that out? And then you give an online class to that group if they're, you know, it's just on Facebook. And of course, if they happen to be local to you, then, you know, great big bonus. So yeah, that's, that's what I recommend is, is go, go find the communities that you would want to be a part of and naturally be a part of anyway. Go be your best self and go make new friends. And the more you are sort of stepping up your game and elevating as a leader, people will follow. People will ask, they'll get curious. And you, you know, you have those conversations, get them started and of course, be that coach. Help them get what they came for. I hope that helps. And definitely, add some more questions here if you got anything else. We got some time for you guys today. Definitely looking forward to in the future, you know, kind of condensing training into smaller, a smaller section like today and then having more of this time on the backend for you guys. So let, let them out. Let's get those questions in. I think I saw something in the chat here. Sherry, um, your possibility. We're not announcing that out loud yet. Sherry, the answer is yes. Just go let that, just, just FYI, be looking, yay, okay. Be looking for that super secret announcement for now to be a very big public one, you know, soonish. Yeah, pretty soon, right? Yep, yep, yep. Awesome. And, and yeah, good, good on you as well. Becky, also using Grow Workspace. I bet, man, I would bet money that the majority of you guys here probably use Grow Workspace too. Grow Workspace works beautifully with GetOiling. They create content. We have the system you put the content into.[1617.18]